The first one is Sioux County Fair and Agricultural Association. Is somebody here from the fair?
Maybe there's anybody.
Is it Scott?
Yeah.
It's Scott Schilt.
Well, we'll go back to him.
Okay.
We gotta wait until 10:15, carefully.
So we'll see, maybe he's running, maybe he'll...
You guys, what group are you with?
Who are you?
But you're with, you were the care team?
This is probably me.
Yeah, she's just with, she's just here.
Oh, you're just here.
I'm with, I'm with the care team, but Ellie will be coming.
As long as we're at that point where we're talking about the fair last year, it was thirty thousand for the fair.
Did they use it though, did they?
No, I don't believe so. I think they were gonna keep it in a fun...
To build this building or something?
Yeah, to re, because they were talking about the fair grounds.
Redo the grants.
Or, yeah, grants.
That's supposed to be over a million dollars, so.
It's the public meeting, right?
Yeah, 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 you're fine. Yeah, you're fine.
Did you have something you wanted to say, or?
Um, no.
No?
I think when Schilt gives your last half, he talked about holding it until we had a bigger project. Maybe assuming that he's already...
He did tell me he's on it too, didn't he?
It's supposed to stay warm all night.
Yeah, I guess so. That's a good thing.
I hope so.
Yeah.
We get some of that stuff that you called thirty on Thursday.
I just meant the trees, Roger, just the trees.
You called it thirty.
Not, not the actual smell of the trees.
You still need to wait till ten fifteen, since that's what's published?
Yeah.
That's fine, just wanted to check.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, I guess I could have on the jet, I just listed them, and then I did the technical letter next year. I'll make an update next year.
When do you see a block, huh?
I know.
Weather announcements?
I told him we blocked everything. We kind of...
Not average, I ain't put a block on it.
Well, you don't have this one. You got this one blocked.
Are you on Casey Bullock or Casey C? Because Casey Bullock is a lot more... All right, well, I'll just be long, knock all your stuff.
Careful what you ask for, right?
Right? You just might get it?
Yeah.
You just might get it? I'll be done.
Like down in this one thing.
We didn't even have to stamp anything today.
Why do you...
I didn't, can you get... I could change it, which makes it... December twenty. First you had a request. Who did you ask? Are you a community?
I was...
Oh.
Yeah, I was just told this too.
Well, I could, I, okay, then I could see maybe if it's someone from the church here that maybe was...
I have no idea.
Is she part of that group? She says that's the church here.
Yeah, she just said it. And I guess I'm gonna ask, literally share the thing that kind of we thought it would be, I didn't think it was PC.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe they get requests like that, so that's okay. We probably can. But listen, Texas, by the time I can afford it, I'm part of the, you're part of the... Or, we wouldn't understand.
Well, I'm sure it's supposed to go up in there six. I believe that was. I think that's the first time I've kind of liked it.
Well, corn beans grow. Beans grow fifteen cents.
Seems like we don't properly do this. Still have some representation. That you made also work. Snow's gonna be easy, I mean, I love that shit.
You and, you and Samuel.
So I said in some... It's good. I bought a couple pounds one day. It's like, they call, they definitely call it, uh, like, uh, call it, uh... Call it.
Just the law, I believe.
Yeah, those stuff, I was surprised. I have a pound of those enough. More here, others for supper, that was enough for me. Lobster, that's only thirty, sixty bucks a pound. Some, uh, over a week, two or four country, two, three, four, five. This one's just a small lobster tail. Team, do you have a tax option?
You got a minute?
And we have some opening.
Put it in eleven.
Yeah, or eleven fifteen.
We are at ten fifteen, Sioux County Care Team.
Those come up there?
Yeah, come on up.
Stand there, sit there, hold for a second, drive a chair, do whatever you want. Oh, that's cool. Is this like a camera? Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, hi, I'm Ellie. I'm the director of the care team here in Sioux County. I was here last year. So, um, so we've had some big changes this past year. Um, we are at record high numbers of clients, so we average about forty-five new clients per month. So people that have never used the care team, that have never used the food pantry. We do assist without trace words with the county's food pantry. Um, they're seeing record numbers too for the food pantry, so everybody's kind of filling that pinch. We are also becoming more bilingual, so all of our literature, all of our documentation in the store, we have to convert to Spanish since we do have a increased number of Hispanic people that are coming to see us. And they literally will come here the day they arrive, like, they're in Florida, then they come see us right away and they get everything they need for their house. They get beds, they get food, they get everything they need, so we are definitely an asset to the Hispanic community. And then, this is only my second time. I don't know what Ellen will say. Um, so this year, we're gonna ask for a little extra money, if that's okay. Um, we're gonna hopefully request seventeen thousand, if that's okay. Um, just because we are having added expenses with translating all of our documentation and being able to assist more individuals.
I think it'd be nice if eventually we could get to, between the city and the county, enough to cover Ellie's salary as director. Everyone else that works in the kind of the retail outlet there are volunteers. So, I'm a volunteer, I do take care of the books there. Um, she has like, what, three generally, or three or four people assisting there, they're all volunteers. Then, of course, we also operate the Love Your Hands Nursery, and most of that is paid staff. There is one volunteer there that's there pretty regularly. Um, so that, that staff is paid. So that's three mornings a week during the school year, where people can bring, bring their children in. And there's no cost to people that bring their children. What's that?
The city's going, going on budgeting money for the care, for the, for the...
Um, yes, they do. Um, I think it's around five thousand or fifty-five hundred, I think, is what we received last year from the city of Elgona. But we are, you know, we, obviously, population is mostly in Elgona, but we certainly are reaching people across the county too. And it is, we've been very fortunate, also with donations of furniture and clothing and, um, so it seems, but it comes in and it goes out quite rapidly, it seems, especially some things, so.
You guys pick it up or do they have to bring?
Uh, we have to bring it in, yeah, yeah. We've, there's been concerns in the past of people going into other people's homes and picking things up and, um, sometimes we don't have the staff to do it and to just have somebody that has a need to go to the home. Um, generally, we are not doing that. There may be, may have been some exceptions.
Ellie? That they leave it out on the curb.
Yeah, they leave it out or something, but they just don't want somebody else going in or somebody's home. Apparently, there's been some issues with that in the past. You gotta make an appointment though?
No, just as long as we're open.
To drop something off, they don't, generally, they don't need an appointment.
When they were lady, she passed, and they're gonna give some stuff to the vets, but whatever the vets don't want, I just wonder if they're gonna be able to bring them sometime.
Yeah, I mean, if it's like, pick up loads or something, it might be, might not hurt to give Ellie a call, but... Generally, what, what, do you, do you have appliances, or?
Um, occasionally, we get appliances. Right now, we have a washer and dryer. Um, we did have a stove last week. We occasionally get in a fridge. Kind of, we do get a fair amount of washer and dryers, but if they can't bring them to us, I'll put it on our Facebook page, like, hey, they left them at the curb. You can get, you have to go there to get it off the curb, and then we usually coordinate with that person, so it's, you know, if they're not in their house or whatever, and everything seems to work out pretty well with doing that. But we do get, um, a fair amount of appliances. Um, we are, we, we are on a constant need of mattresses, so if you know of anybody that has any size mattress that's in, you know, decent condition, we always take those, because those are in high demand and those are in and out same day.
Do you still do that, uh, two hundred dollar a family for vehicle? Like a battery, this is, camera footage on the D cap, we did that, or?
Yeah, that was through the D cap. That was just a specific program. Um, and so, that's not currently in process now. So some of our funding like that comes specifically, you know, from a certain program, and it needs to all be used for a certain thing, so then that type, that type of funding doesn't help with our salaries or overhead or anything like that. We do, we did, we do an annual letter appeal that we send out to a number of people and businesses, and so those funds do help with the funding, the operation to rent and, and salaries and supplies, so.
I don't D cap. You might wanna get ahold of them again, they're looking, they had some mini grants, they're trying to get rid of some money, because I'm on, I was on that board.
Yeah.
And I can't remember if you guys submitted one or not, but if you didn't, you might want to submit one, because they're looking for a place to have to get rid of money.
Yeah, I think we did talk about that a little bit.
Yes, being finished. Got a little, got a lot of stuff going on in the Christmas season, so that's on my docket to finish up, sitting on my desk.
I think we are planning to submit. Okay, I'll put it down and just see what, uh, will come up with, when we get into crunching it up.
All right.
I appreciate your service to the county.
Thank you.
To the new young men too, so.
Thank you.
That's right. We'll, we'll work it.
Alder Bridge is at one forty-five, but...
That one's...
We're doing that at zero percent, that's a good one.
Was he getting a loan? We got a loan, loan, blur.
Either way, leave it up to him, whenever he can come. The next one is written, because, um, yes, because, um, she called me yesterday, Brian, I mean, yes. Peggy, she called me yesterday and said, um, she wasn't gonna be here today. And she said that what they usually do is speed up of Western Iowa tourism. Um, and so usually, they get like, um, they get three hundred, and Western Iowa tourism gets five hundred, so it's usually like eight hundred. So, but I do wanna point out, from Western Iowa tourism, I got information from Big Earth, I, um, Sioux County, I, I, Brian Albert, that, um, Western Iowa tourism is no longer, um, recognized as a state tourism authority, because they're kind of dwindling out. And so she wasn't sure if that was something that...
Yeah, the twenty-eight day agreement, well?
Right, that's, that's what I was just gonna say, they gotta get that back.
They'll have to change it, or changing the...
Well, this is the letter we got from Western Iowa Tourism, you have it in the package, I think that I'm gonna jump in for later today, they're not gonna be here, there's a... Also, right, yes. So this is all we will get from them, so Brian did say that she thought that they were going to be asking for money, but she wasn't sure if that was something that the board would want to go forward with or not, and I'll see if I can find her name or something.
You're asking for five hundred.
Yeah, and then, five hundred, you said what they're asking for?
Yeah. I was just gonna add, write down five hundred in the form for a request, that's a big address here.
For Western Iowa tourism, and then three hundred for that you heard.
Oh, yeah.
That's what we got last year.
See, we, that gives, uh, the college, I think, or...
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
That'd be a great two with you.
One more. Christ intervention, I don't think there are, I don't know if there's anybody, right?
Yes, they're gonna do Zoom.
So are we gonna Zoom it?
Um, they're just gonna bring one another laptop, and we'll set it there on the table, and then the laptop there, yeah. So, but that's not until the second, one forty-five.
That's the only one zooming?
Yes.
Oh, they were at ten forty-five.
No, Christ intervention.
No, not them. I, I, I'm sorry, Alder Bridge just is zooming.
The Christ intervention, they just, they just...
They should be here, I haven't heard anything.
Can I be a review of Sam Blackton?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't do that with the...
Oh, well, Sam, he's one that, that, he's available for billions of dollars, and PEXP or whatever it was, Bitcoin. I thought he does have a block, he can't get anything.
Told ya.
Yep, he's blocking that too.
He doesn't have solid block.
Does he?
He can still get on solid here, maybe we can...
He got a new coat at the market, it ain't blocked, ain't blocked yet. Wendy, I'll check it out. Come on up. Sorry, my show's over. She walked away, that's six months, I mean, it's almost, it's like, oh, my shit. God, you kid.
Walmart?
Somebody said, you know, it's not in the bag. They check your receipt and walk out the door. I guess they stopped somebody and they told them, I checked myself up. If you ain't good enough, tell me, check out. And they look in my cart. They just kept walking.
You guys just picked up his bag.
Oh, they, they came out in eleven, eighteen now, but they called me earlier and said, is there a timeline on it? And I said, no. Get here one week, yeah.
When was supposed to, was the twenty-seventh?
January, but that's part of the motion for the same as that by opening week. That's not a.
Do we have to come?
No, um, March top two, we're trying to be able to represent everybody who's at that. So I, I understand it as he will be the one.
Y'all have to go talk to Derek. He's got a lot.
Roger.
He's hiding.
Yeah. I did buy my information for Ryan when he gets back. Okay. So this is what Ryan said about, um, Western Iowa Tourism. She said, she calls it three region funds. It ended September thirtieth. The new state tourism representative starts September twenty-sixth. So the state is now having a tourism program, but they're not asking for any funding from the counties. It sounds like Western Iowa Tourism is going to try and stay afloat, but they will have to go get the board supervisors to continue their funding. But the board supervisors need to be knowledgeable with the state no longer supports the three regions. Um, the state has revamped their state tourism program. So that was what she had said. So I'm just passing it over.
Two tourism makers.
But I will put down the request and I, I do have a email, a letter email I've sent and it says, um, they're requesting five hundred for Western Iowa and three hundred for the cheaper.
Donny's board with mental health and my board with North Iowa Community Action. One don't know what the other one's doing. Jack's board. No, I'm working together.
When you have money, D C, they get money out, they don't talk to you either.
It's really atrocious. Still raining?
Looks like it. Willie's doing muscle flow. Willie's working muscle flow, yeah.
I think he just got back. He was out in Missouri, I think.
Pardon?
Yeah.
Pretty well packed in. Yeah. Yes, she's pretty well sucked in. Lots of black and blue and very evil. Yellow.
Coming in or?
Yeah.
Check temperature. It's supposed to drop. That's what I'm concerned.
Yeah, I think later on today it's supposed to start dropping.
What in the ground?
It's, it says, it's gonna see, it's gonna warm up, Jack. Later it's, it's gonna go to thirty-six.
Little clock, it's thirty-five, yeah.
Yeah.
Then that's thirty-eight.
Yep, you're supposed to get warm.
Put rain in that one clock.
Uh, yeah, it's gonna quit at one.
Should be good if it didn't be out there. Was it a western shoe rush or something?
The low tonight's thirty-seven.
Yeah.
But tomorrow night, when it drops to twenty-four, that's supposed to snow on Thursday.
We're not gonna let it snow.
You know that guy that gets the markets on the morning of K L G A? He's like a rodeo bear or whatever, traveling, whatever. He was saying yesterday, it's a guy in Montana, couple's got three foot of snow.
Really?
Yeah, out of the storm.
You know, he lives in retirement. He lives out in Miami now. And he said, he had pictures. They went out after second Christmas tree. They go out and cut down their own. This now, I mean, he looked like he was up to his waist in snow.
What'd you say, one of the weird shoot that stuff?
But I said, do you want to just tell?
Uh, I did go and watch it. We both tried it or whatever. Today I don't feel happy being tonight.
Where's that?
I think it's here.
Her name was on radio. It was one of her, but she's eighteen now, I guess.
How old is she? What baby can?
Yes, she is. But she wants to stay for, shot her too.
Yeah, she wanted that. Didn't she like to stay and shop for?
She wanted, she was real close. I can't remember. I thought she wanted that other gal that, that good messing up there. Yeah, that Molly won long jump. She could jump. I watched her drill. Holy dick. Did her dad still teach her little control shot, but then she needs.
Yeah, thanks.
She, she, she released her.
There's something at the school for this chair.
Well, she lives in there. They're mobile, they live in there. She is there.
Like a young soldier, they say.
Thought they lived together up in their own home place.
East, west side of.
The G month, well, for.
Good morning.
Good morning. I think he's got the weather in plot too. Can't get it counted.
Did he clock certainly yours? Oh, hang on a second.
When did you say you seen her?
Even left this morning. I figured she, she up and down for early.
Corruptor section, she's got a whole core of seven. They're getting more rain soft. Wind is getting the smell.
It is raining here, but we'll probably take the reason we need the sun next year.
Yeah.
Are you too much for all the suns?
Pipestone's getting snow.
Pipestone does some of?
Yeah.
Kevin, Kevin's hot, I mean.
Is that pipestone?
Yeah, they have a, they're quite large cliffs and, you know, it's. Those things.
Yes, that weekend up there years ago.
We used to quiet videos and staff. Just have a bail. Yeah.
Everything stuff, you gotta get up in the elevator, you turn it on and you sit there and give you the rights today. It was big time. You sit down there and feel sure. It had to be ninety-nine to shake. You couldn't go far. I think there's a lot.
I would be a little long down chicken house if you couldn't stand up right. So the videos and the full bells. So they can read outside. It was good for you.
Oh, it was good.
Yeah, it was. I would be happy.
So they're gonna swivel off. Swivel up. I was like, she on four.
You don't like your act?
I do. I think I changed my back pants lately, sure. The jewels are all good.
Who's chasing across the lawn with these bats and shovels and pink and white and shovels.
You were a paper man. You had the bed sections, you know, when you take a girl apart from sections. Each time I show her, I'm getting there. He's got all the way up in the corner. It's a show. He's got open up about this big. It's like, well, it digs a lot more stuff. We're getting ready to start bailing, they're showing, then he starts a lot more up. He says, I don't want none of my rigs busted. You see a hack, just let it go. Ever happen, jump out, run around? You see that opening? No more racking over and hacking.
We stay at both towns. My brother-in-law, he started the stock, more people stock.
Yep. And you get, you get that where they had like, oh, that's only nine or three years before. And then you pick it, it stands there. It's like.
We are ready. Crisis intervention service.
Hi.
Come on up.
All right. And we are due to doing this, so can we just kind of stand here?
Or have a seat.
Oh, have a seat.
There's another.
Oh, okay, perfect. All right. Sounds good. And I have, um, copies of kind of our, our letter for everyone, but I can, I can go over it, but.
Thank you.
So we are, sorry, Crisis Intervention Service. I think Mary usually comes to talk to you and she couldn't today. I'm Emily Kingery and I'm the domestic abuse program supervisor. Um, I've done a couple of these. Do you guys get some too? But I've been with Crisis Intervention for twenty-one years. Um, I started as a, a shelter advocate and have kind of gone through a bunch of different positions to end up where I am now. So, um, I have done a few of these in some of my other counties. But we've been around as general information, we've been around since nineteen seventy-seven. We've covered a lot of areas. It's been a lot of step over time that through the state, you know, they restructured services and whatnot. And so I believe we originally had nine counties and we serve fifteen now in North Central Iowa. Um, and I became the supervisor and then we got a new sexual assault supervisor in twenty twenty. Um, so we kind of came into our jobs during COVID and had to deal with a lot of, a lot of different things. But with everything that goes on, we've really been focusing on, um, just trying to be dependable, reliable, um, quality services. Like despite anything that happens with, um, staff turnover or anything, because we all hear about how those things happen. But to always, we always have that same number. We always have somebody answering the phone and we're always providing the best services that we can. Um, and I do want to introduce Amanda. She is our new sexual assault advocate, but she's been with the agency for a while and she's gonna have to pop out to go to court. So I thought I would just let you kind of just do a real quick thing here.
So I am Amanda Johnson. I am the new sexual assaults advocate for Cassup, Flinvego and Hancock County. It was Joel Higginborn. I came into this role about a week and a half ago. Prior to that, I've worked with the agency since September twenty twenty. So I kind of came in part with COVID, um, and my focus was housing. So I did the transitional housing program. So I worked with our survivors, um, and helping them become self-sufficient and finding places and helping with rent, um, and utilities for up to two years in that program and help have. So I've worked with our domestic, on the domestic side and on the sexual assault side, um, with all clients. So I am. Excited, excited to get started and I, we do have an office here in Algonah, um, by Bishop Eric in school. So that I'm there at least once, like to be here at least twice a week. So.
And, and available for her.
Yes, yep, yeah.
All through the week. So, um, this just came to go through our services. We do the domestic abuse, sexual assault, um, survivors of homicide victims and other violent crimes programs. So pretty much anybody that's been impacted by trauma or violence, we have a service for them. We're supportive services. Um, we do victim counseling, uh, court advocacy, medical advocacy. Um, we are on call twenty-four hours a day. So if you have an emergency, we're gonna show up for you, um, at, at all times. Um, and then we do a lot of prevention. So trying to get into schools and community programs, um, things like that to, uh, just educate the public about our services and, and these different, um, issues. Overall, last year, um, the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two for our fiscal year, we, um, answered seven thousand and sixty-two crisis calls. We provided services to two thousand three hundred and ten individuals within our service area. Um, domestic abuse, sexual assault, child abuse, and homeless and general information referral calls are basically what we've done. So we assisted five hundred and sixty-eight victims in the criminal civil legal system, provided medical advocacy to a hundred and six victims and provided housing and financial assistance to six hundred and twenty individuals. Um, there's a little bit more just general information about us here. About our budget, um, we have put twenty-four, um, advocates or, or other individuals and then where our funding comes from. Uh, specifically for Cassup County, um, we provide, um, state funding, our services counseling and create education programs. Um, and we provide the services to ninety-two individuals in Cassup County in the past year. Um, we've also facilitated six prevention education programs. We do two hundred and seventy-three individual doors. The total cost of providing services within Cassup County was ninety-five thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-six cents in, um, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, we really focus on trying to reach out and serve rural people. Um, it is basically everyone that we serve, but we understand how hard it is to get services, to be mobile, to be around. Um, it seems like resources for people keep, you know, shrinking and, and we have been here, you know, since nineteen seventy-seven and we don't plan to go anywhere. So, um, if they have any questions about what we do or services or, or anything like that.
So when do you know if you get the federal state grants? When they already locked in or?
Yes, yep, yep. Um, and we were expecting, it was like forecast that we, we would have kind of a significant, um, cut like statewide, but, but it was, it was much smaller. So we were able to just continue on as we were. We didn't lose any people. Um, it is, it is all good. We're, we've got another, um, year with us, but I, I don't see it significantly changing. So.
So twenty-four individuals, they're all within how many counties?
Oh, the ones that work for Crisis?
Oh, the fifteen counties. Yes, the fifteen county areas, um, we were divided, we kind of divided ourselves into what we call hubs, there are four sections, and so, um, the northwest hub is, is Cassou, Winnebago, and Hancock County, so there's a domestic abuse advocate and a sexual assault advocate that covered those counties. We also cover Winnebago for our homicide, um, and other violent crimes program, um, those regions run off the D C I map, where they're in the victim services map, and, and so. Like Cassou County is actually identified as a stop out of Fort Dodge for the survivors of homicide and other violent crimes program.
Yeah, 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 it says in the.
Yes, thank you, thank you guys for supporting us, because we really can't do what we do without, you know, even, even just spreading the word or, or being supportive to people in your community, there's, you can't do much without that, so, we appreciate it greatly, and I'm glad the weather turned out okay. We made it here just fine, so, thank you.
Break to eleven thirty?